Tonight is the Tuesday, August 29th, 2023, meeting of the Lakeville Select Board. We have all members present this evening. We've got members Carbone, Day, and Fabian, as well as Town Administrator Skye. Lake Cam is recording this session, and I leave our first order of business this evening.
Is anyone else recording?
Is anyone else recording this session tonight? No, I do not see any hands up. Thank you, Ms. Fabian. All right, so first on our agenda is to go into executive session. So I'll entertain a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Item 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate if the Chair declares, and he does, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and we will return to open session.
You have more?
No.
Approval of the executive session minutes?
Yes, I know.
Oh, the minutes, that's right. And to also do approval of executive session minutes for June 26, 2023, and August 21st, 2023.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Carbone, aye.
Fabian, aye.
Day, aye. Thank you, everybody. We're now moving to executive session. Lake Cam will be back when we are back in open session. We've returned from executive session, so we are back in open session. The August 29th, 2023 Lakeville Select Board meeting. Even though we mentioned it before, we'll mention it again, Lake Cam is recording this open session. So we will move on to Agenda Item Number 2, which actually is "Discuss", the August 23rd, 2023 Open Meeting Law Complaint, which was related to recording a public meeting. So it appears in MGL there is one sentence that mentions that you are supposed to announce if the meeting is being recorded by anybody, which Lake Cam is every time that they're here, which we thank them for. So we will be more diligent of mentioning that at the opening of the meeting as we move forward. Any questions or comments on that before moving on?
Nope, just, I guess, to maybe have our town clerk's office just send out a brief reminder to our Chairs of our committees to make sure that they state that at the beginning of their meetings.
All right, that sounds good. Okay, moving on then. Item Number 3, Discuss Operational and Resource Considerations for the Transition to the Five-Member Select Board. All right, Ari, you had put together a number of things in the past. We also have the clerk with us this evening, who deals a lot with us and other boards. Where would you like to start this evening?
So what I thought I'd do is kind of summarize the memo that I provided you. And any questions or discussions from there, we can kind of talk through, however close you can get from there. The first point was, you know, the memo was kind of divided into two to three pieces. It was policy, operational, and capital. The policy side, which in some ways is maybe sticky aside, has to do with the potential for contradictory direction as you expand a board to five, to allow people talking past each other. And it would probably be helpful to have, for staff and future staff, for them to be established in policy, some more concrete direction as far as how the board's going to provide direction to staff. Just bigger group formalize the process a little bit. This was certainly recommended thing to do. That can be done through a number of ways, whether through policy, code of conduct, tasking standards. I worked in a jurisdiction where my boss called it the Rule of Eight, which was, with a five-member board, and it was, the rule was that if a board member asks a staff to do something that takes more than eight hours, then the board, you know, has to consider what to do with that. I don't know, we need to be quite that tough about this, but it does speak to the point that if one board member wants one thing, another one wants another thing, and you have these cross purposes, that the opportunity for that probably expands the bigger the board gets. So that was one thing to think about. Staff support on the operational side, I'm just kind of killing two birds with one stone with this proposal here. We've established, you know, during the budget process, and the board actually asked me to look at for next year's budget, staff resources for the clerk's office, given the shortages and issues that she has and the challenges. We have a physical limitation to that right now in terms of space, and which we have some proposals to deal with. Also, you know, with the board growing from three to five, it's a two-thirds increase in the size of the board. And I can tell you from experience that we get, you know, it's all good, we're an active, engaged board, but we get a lot of questions and directions and follow-up and things like that to deal with. And we want to continue to be able to provide high-quality services. I think it would be helpful if we could have some type of, you know, some type of resources available to help with backup and things like that. So I spoke with Lillian, and she thought it'd be a good idea, with the idea of a shared position, should be, you know, dealing with clerk's issues on an ongoing basis. All clerk's issues when the real wave came through, and then to help sort of smooth out the workloads and so on, help out a little bit in the board office as well. To make that work, though, we did just say about space. Really don't have any space left in the building. We just don't for another position. So the only possibility that anyone else could think of was the idea of taking the conference room behind Tracy and Christina's office, demising that conference room, turning it into office space, and utilizing that. And I have some ideas on how to do that. We would have to, to make that work, we'd have to take the upstairs space, which is where, if you recall, we put in sort of a training room kind of area, maybe enclosing that, and allowing for that to be a shared space. It wouldn't be easy accessible, but the current space isn't either. And, you know, there'd be some collaboration there, and the fire department would have to, you know, certainly be some collaboration. Right now, we have our department having meetings up there, we have a number of meetings up there on a regular basis. So I don't think it's much of a change in the way we do things too much, other than the use of that space that's the current board conference room would have to be changed. Also, look at agenda production, and same, Brian, you've been very intent on as well. And that's, you know, just looking at the way we handle our production of agendas. It's a very paper-intensive process. I did a little digging into how much we spend on photocopying in town hall. It's about $7,000 a year. And that's, you know, it's not all board items, obviously, but there's a lot of copying that happens. And there are hosted services available. I've used them in other jurisdictions, which allow for production of agendas. If we could find a way to make that the standard, and maybe start with the board and move it through other committees, you know, I think we could save a lot of money on paper through that. And, you know, a little less exciting is the cost of stipends. I've mentioned that in the past. FY24 costs will be about $2,250, about $9,000 a year for the additional stipends. Can't really speak to the insurance piece, because you don't know how people are going to pick it, how they're going to pick it, but that'll be an additional cost as well. On the second page of here, I have a kind of a breakdown of the costs that would be involved. The FY24 capital will be about $29,100, total probation will be about $55,000, which will allow us to hide the highest position midway through the year. Going to automated agenda by software licenses, computers, things like that, laptops for the board members, and also pay for the stipends. And the capital piece will be about $29,000 or so to do the work that I described. And then the recurring annual cost would be about $57,000 a year, most of which would be for that position. So those are the, you know, if the board's available for that, the way to pay for that would be through fall town meeting and then add it to the budget next year. So that's what I have time for. Do you want to talk about your position here?
Well, this position would only work for me if this person is dedicated during election years. So next year's a very busy year. I know you're proposing a part-time person, so...
It's full-time.
It's full-time?
Yeah.
So I'm guessing you're sharing 20/20 hours, 20 hours per year?
I think, as you and I discussed, it would vary depending on the time of year.
I mean, I wouldn't want to take this person away from all of the duties that you need for your office, or vice versa. So I'm hoping that this will work, but I'm very skeptical about the space. Where am I going to put this person to help me? Especially on election time. Next year's going to be very busy, and... Am I going to put this person in the hallway? I know you have upstairs. Yeah.
If I can, through the Chair.
Of course.
How much time would you say right now that we use a floater in the Select Board's office?
We haven't used it much, because the only floater that we had for a long time basically got detailed over to Inspection Services. We've since hired someone just recently, and we're starting to integrate her in a little bit. So right now, frankly, not much. I do think we went to five members. And also, you know, we know that there's been some issues occasionally with backup and staffing coverage. I think it would be helpful to have the position. I don't think it's enough to, I don't think it's the primary reason for the position.
Right, because when we were talking through the budget cycle for your department, were we talking about part-time or full-time?
I was looking for a part-time person.
Part-time?
Yes.
So this expense would be borne, half, I mean, I'm looking at the bigger picture, would be half town clerk's department, and then half...
That's how, yeah, we could adjust it either way, but that's what I was...
So in an election year, it might be heavier clerk.
Budget-wise, yes, we could do it half-half, but the truth is, you know, Will and I have a very good relationship, a very collaborative relationship, and I think the intention would be that Will says to me, listen, this person's got to be working on, you know, elections now. That's always going to be primary.
Right, right, because that would be a concern for me, too, as I'm sure it is for everybody here. And if it's not needed in the Select Board, I mean, I would, that's the thing. I don't want to fund a position that we may not need.
We have a lot of, you know, Tracy can speak to this a little bit, too, if you don't mind, Tracy. We have a lot of paperwork, a lot of kind of backup of filing and support, things like that, that are frankly not happening as well as we'd like them to, because of the front desk requirements that we have. Tracy, do you want to talk to that at all?
Well, I mean, right now, nothing's been filed for probably two years. But that being said, I have started scanning more things, so that I'm not putting paper in the files. I would like to have the ability to have someone come in and go through the files, put them in order, and then scan them, so that we can get rid of the six cabinets that we have that just hold files. So that would be, you know, a job to do. You know, we always can use someone, if I'm on vacation, to cover, Christina's out to cover. So, you know, we, that is, that's a goal. Before I retire, I want to get all those files organized and scanned.
Okay. I mean, I can understand where you're coming from on that, but we also have opportunity to utilize an outside agency, you know, to be able to come in and scan all those documents. You know, we've done it in other areas, too. I think you did everything, got all those files organized downstairs. We use King's...
King's information.
Systems to organize, yeah, you did a great job.
So, you know, I mean, I...
I mean, the other point I would make is also, you know, redundancy. There is a need, you know, there are times in that office when there's only one person there. There are times when, you know, I'm covering myself, Christina's covering herself, whatever, and that's not exactly ideal, given the demands on the positions. And I think it's, you know, I love the staff I have, but I also think it'd be helpful to the organization if we have somebody there who is sort of learning a bit about what's going on. And maybe we could fill in step-in shoes down there when we have an issue, when we have, you know, we have a notice, and we have to deal with a board meeting. And, you know, there have been times, over the past couple days, I'm not complaining, where I've had to, you know, fully manage the agenda myself, and also, you know, and also do the job of town administration at the same time.
I would say, generally speaking, it seems that the town does run almost on a skeleton crew to some degree. There's very little cross-training. There's very few people that are in what I'd consider a direct assistant position, ready to step in if somebody leaves or something happens. So I see the benefits in the cross-training. I'm sure there's likely no shortage of things to do if we had the people power to do it.
Your final point is going to be that with the five-member board, the management tower is just going to be greater. This is the reason.
I try to be cognizant of not asking for too many fetch-the-rock kind of exercises, because it's very easy to ask for something and not realize the complexity behind it. And then suddenly, it's like you've had to get three or four people involved to make that, get that one answer, whatever it might have been. I mean, your office is nuts during election years.
So if I can add to that, all of my clerks in the surrounding areas have been getting themselves ready for 2024. I feel like I'm the last one right now. And I'm trying to, before I leave, I want to make sure that my office is run efficiently, especially when it comes to elections. I can't do it all by myself anymore. I used to. Elections were easy. Now we have vote-by-mail. We have early voting, which early voting for two weeks is an election every single day. So it's, I need manpower for that. So my clerks in the area have now part-time person for that. Just Middlebar themselves, they just have now an election coordinator. Because imagine nine precincts, well, seven precincts with two sub-precings. The poor clerk couldn't do all that, so now they need that extra help. So this has evolved, that a lot of us are like, okay, we're scrambling. We've got to figure this out. So Lakeville needs to figure it out.
Is there, I hear you're concerned. Do we fill a role that doesn't have the work? Is there an opportunity to do this as a contract role for a year or two and see how things shake out? Or is that a no-no?
I don't know how comfortable I feel about that contract person running through the Washington administration.
Well, they wouldn't be running the administration of that, but I just, I wouldn't feel comfortable.
But we left our budget cycle with the fact that there was a fully funded position not filled in the building department. So they have, at this time, have managed to fill that position, so that's being utilized. But there was a floating position that we had available, that I believe we had said that that would be directed to the town clerk's office.
And we're going to, and the intention is to have that person help out as we can. We just feel it would be better to have, you know, you're asking this way, we think the resource requirements are, you know, it would be helpful to have a dedicated position.
And then...
But you just brought somebody on, you said, right? You brought in...
The floater.
Okay. Twenty hours a week.
Yeah.
Right, but that was dedicated to the town clerk's office. That person was supposed to...
It was supposed to be dedicated to town hall.
If I remember correctly, I'm not saying that I do, there was an anticipation that that full-time position in Inspection Services would get filled, which would then free up the floater to help with the anticipated load as a short-term measure. And then we would investigate this to figure out what was the long-term.
And that person actually applied for and got the job in Inspection Services, so the floater's a new person.
So same person, just different title now.
Because I think you even asked the question, you know, as a follow-up to something I had asked, how soon did you need to get this person, you know, on to get them acclimated to what was ahead? And she said yesterday. So, you know... So where is this floater right now that we can't be, what is this floater doing, the one that we just hired? I thought that was supposed to be, at least supposed to help the clerk's office out.
Well, she hasn't been in my office yet, so I believe this person is floating between the assessors, Patricia's office, the COA.
I mean, we, yeah, I think there've been discussions between you and HR about that position.
Yeah.
So the floater is acting as a floater, basically?
Yes.
And has not been able to free up to support your office? Basically, that's what it sounds like.
And that was what the intent was, to make sure that we would utilize that floater for the needs of the town clerk until we...
I remember what I said, was that that floater would be available to help out with backup, you know, once you fill that position.
So how long has the floater been working?
Six weeks, maybe?
I think so, six weeks, yeah.
Okay. I feel like I'm nowhere near making a decision to hire another full-time person until we sort of figure out what this floater is going to do.
Can I just add to that? The floater right now, I believe, is, only works from 10 to 2. I think she, this person has some transportation issues, so I don't know if she was hired with those hours. Or with that, or until the issue is resolved, the hours are going to be expanded. But, I mean, 10 to 2 doesn't work for me. Maybe just to the transition, maybe to answer the phones, maybe, if I can get them to the office.
I think the real issue you were having with the floater was that, I don't speak to you about it. I think it was that the, you need somebody who could really be, you know, get into the election piece of things, and you're all, you know, going up so far.
But not at this moment, because we're not dealing with elections. I need that person to get familiar with the, how to transfer phone calls, how to service someone at the window. And I think by her being in the other offices, she's getting that training. So I'm guessing she'll soon be at my office. I haven't coordinated that with John yet.
Then we'd be having the other discussion, which is if she's able to then be assigned, for lack of better words, to your office for a period of time. What are the other departments missing, then, if that person is currently...
You really need the position for coverage. I mean, we really do need the position for coverage, because we are quite thin in all the offices.
It feels like we would be trading one problem for another.
We do have another floater, though. Keep in mind, we do have two floaters.
And how you utilize your board.
I, I'm just very confused here, because I thought we were supposed to hire someone. I mean, I didn't think we were hiring people that had transportation issues. I'm just really confused with what we've done with the actual, you know, position. So we happen that Lorraine made that suggestion during the budget season that there is a funded position that wasn't hired, so I'm really having a hard time right now. As for some of the other stuff that's been discussed, I think in the last three months, maybe even, yeah. I think I asked Tracy to actually copy one thing for me. So anyone that comes in that's new is going to have more, I mean, even our, you know, retired town administrator Rita would always say that she would take more time with new select people so that they could get up and running. It's going to take a little bit of time. But it's not like a constant. I mean, between the three of us, I don't really think that... I mean, Tracy, are you overworked by just your select people? You know what? That's not fair to ask her. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have done that. That's not fair.
She's going to say no no matter what.
Yeah, but, but, you know, I just really wish we could give the floater an opportunity for the departments to work out the position before we're, you know, hiring someone else. Because again, hiring someone else is going to come with a, you know, a problem with where do we put this person? And I'm not saying that's not a reason to hire it, but I'm also saying, you know, I'm not so sure I want to spend a whole lot of money reconfiguring offices when we spent about $50,000 between 2019 and 2020 to reconfigure everything. So I could, I mean, is there any reason why we can't move the planner's office to the, you know, other building and utilize that space? I mean, I could...
I don't have space available on the other building, but yeah, I understand your sin.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
There's no, you can turn around, it's time on the old library, yeah, there's no space over there at all. There's just, there's no space at all.
Okay.
Yeah, you have, even if you go in the basement, because some of what they're using as an office is more like a banquet table that got set up.
So I just, I don't know that we need a full-time person. I just feel like we've spent, you know, we've, we definitely needed a facilities director. We hired a facilities director. I mean, we've hired, I alone have voted on hiring so many positions, you know, that I really have to, you know, put on the brakes now, because, you know, again, we said we don't like the way new growth is looking. I don't know where, you know, some of this is going to get paid for. As far as the board going from three to five people, I, you know, wasn't in favor because of all these things. And I tried to express that, but this is what the people of Lakeville wanted. So we just have to make it work somehow.
So, I'm sorry.
No, and I just feel like, I feel like the folks of Lakeville, you know, want more control over their town government, not less control. So even some of these things up here, Ari, that you suggested in these first couple paragraphs, I don't think we have any business discussing a policy right now on, how did you put it?
Describing the Select Board's governance role?
Yes, because, you know, the, these positions will be filled, hopefully, at the April election. And I feel like, you know, the town wants more governance. Maybe we give those people the opportunity to actually create these policies with us, if they even feel like the majority of the board...
Yeah, of course, my intention, my intention at the moment was to identify the considerations I think you ought to consider. And I gave it to you guys in a draft form.
Yeah.
I want, I'll save us a lot of time here, just to stick a pin in this. And we'll see how things go over the next year. What I'd like, what we will need to do, no matter what, you know, include funding for the stipends.
Yes.
So I need to do that.
We definitely need to do that.
And make sure we have the money for laptops, that kind of thing. So, you know, I'll scale this down. I'll look at that, and I'll just come back with that.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as, you know, creating some big office changes and, you know, I know...
I get it.
You know...
Well, I mean, to be fair, you know, where it says the policy describing the Select Board governance role, that's already defined in the Town Administrator Act. That's already been done. It's more, I think the second part is clarifying, how do we not overwhelm the office accidentally? Especially if we end up with two or three people that have never been in a position before. But yeah, I mean, there's certainly a lot of costs here, no matter what. But at the end of the day, I don't hear a solution for helping the clerk's office.
No.
Right, so it goes back to what Lorraine said, though, during the budget season. You know, when you called out that we needed someone for the clerk's office, so...
But just because your question is...
During the budget process next year, that's kind of what we said. You know, if we're not going to do this now, then let's just stick a pin in it.
I mean, where would the money for that position, even a part-time position for the... But even still, do you need a part-time or 20 hours a week every week of the year?
I will.
Okay. I mean...
So we have, we have a budget process in place, you know, enhancement process for requesting additional resources. And we'll balance it against, you know, what things look like revenue-wise. We don't really know at this point.
Yeah.
So I think, I think we have direction from the board on this. I think we probably just kind of, I was just going to move on.
Well, what is the underlying reason the floaters are, it sounds ridiculous. What are the reasons the floaters are floating right now? Is it just simply there's so much staff out that they can't free up to assist the clerk's office?
Their office is staffed by one or two people.
Right, so back to, we're a skeleton crew all the time.
Right, which is something I've always said. I think folks think we have five and six people in each office. We really don't.
We already have a floater that works a lot of time in that office.
So, I mean, what happens, though, is like if we operate in a skeleton crew, and if we do say, which I would love to say, put one in our office and help them as much as possible, especially next year. Or before, because you've got to ramp them up. You know, there's give and take. We can say known as positions, but we're going to have to accept degraded services to the residents in order to help elections. There's only so many hours and people.
Right, so for me, too, the other thing is, you know, can we really evaluate all the floating positions? I mean, how many, is that what we want to do? Is it, do we want a staff that's staffed by part-timers everywhere? I mean, I, you know, maybe the assessors, you know...
Some of the part-timers is, you know, floaters are one thing, because they tend to be retired, and they're just used for a little extra money. Part-timers are frankly are really tough to attract, because you have no benefits.
Right.
You know, and, you know, I suppose if, if somebody just wants a little, something to do on the side, that's one thing. But it also means that you don't have the same availability that you want to have either.
But we did say that the part-time person was going to be in the town clerk's office.
And we have a floater in there nearly all, you know, definitely.
Well, right now, she's had a commission. She's had surgery.
Right.
So she hasn't been... So she hasn't been able to be. Um, just when I'm absent, or someone's on vacation, or we're attending conferences. Yes, I do have her helping me.
Yeah, but it's still not-
But I need someone that's part-time, helping me with, I'm there, Kim is there, and then just-
Standard hours, not-
And that's the other problem.
There's, there's two slots, there's two, two spaces in that, in that office, that's it.
So there's no other unfulfilled positions, approved positions, so we've filled all the approved positions?
Besides like DPW, I think it's missing a couple.
We do have vacancies, but you're talking about town hall.
I'm talking about like clerks or administrative assistants, or anything like that.
We'll come, we'll come back to it later.
And I think that if there is, you know, a need where there's a project that's come up in, in the department, there's no reason why the select board's office wouldn't engage the floater to support whatever that is, as it is, as you do now. So I know that there's been times when, you know, the, the three that we have in the select board's office haven't been there at the same time, that we've had to have somebody in to answer the phones and be available. So, I mean, it's like we use the floater anyways if we need to. So I just wanna say that I'm not exclaiming that, you know, if we need the, the backup, that we wouldn't request the support. I mean, I think if we find that this new position that we filled, and we're still struggling, especially with the clerk's office, then I think we look at it in the budget process and say, we've given this new position that, that wasn't filled, we've given it five months, and then, you know, um-
So the challenge again, though, is she needs somebody now. I know it's a little getting off topic, so like how do we, how do we support that effort? Because once we get into the budget process, it's February, March, we're already at Super Tuesday for primaries.
Yeah.
Soon as you get somebody, if you do it, then it would be, um, well, May, maybe coming in just a little money, twenty-four.
Right.
And, you know, we have-
I mean, it feels like we need to go back to, you know, the person that freed up, come and get them in there now to get some education on the elections process, and then what else suffers, honestly? I mean, without more heads, that's, that's our trade-off.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I guess we'll just look to, you know, you know, kind of industry.
Okay. So my plan for fall timing is gonna be, you know, to have to do stipend and stuff like that.
Correct.
Uh, laptops.
Lab.
Licenses, things like that.
And insurance can be anywhere up to like twenty grand a person for family plan?
It can be, yeah, I don't know if, I don't know if it's worth, well-
I'm just asking out of curiosity.
If, if you do the opt-out, it'd be five thousand. If you, if you get insurance, it can be probably, you know, fifteen, twelve fifteen, sixty.
All right, so it's up there, okay.
I mean, in the scale of things, it's, it's a big pot of money, so, it's all claims-based.
Yep.
You know, so it's, okay, thank you.
Uh, well, I mean, we didn't hit everything here, so like we did skip over the agenda production. I mean, is there any interest in at least asking the platform that hosts our website to give us a demonstration of what that could mean? Because, you know, we're all kind of sitting around waiting for the packet to come out on Friday, because we get it as a whole. And my hope is a system like this allows, you know, Tracy and staff to be building that as we're getting to posting, so that we can be looking at these things as it's getting created, and asking questions or doing research, whatever it might be, so it's not like, ah, it's eleven a.m. on Friday, I gotta get my questions for the next hour and a half before it's the weekend, and then, you know, we run it on Monday, hair on fire.
I mean, I'm all for having our town administrator look into that and, and come back with, you know, if the cost associated with it and, um, you know. Yeah, I mean, I agree too, my only big thing is, we had people who just didn't wanna do any meetings at all during COVID because they didn't wanna use Zoom, so I hate to be doing all that for, you know, one board. And there's still a whole bunch of people who like, you know, um-
If you would need to, um, the board would really need to decide, this is the way you're gonna do it.
Right.
You'd say, you need to say, whatever hosts the system, there are a lot of them, the Novus Agenda, Granicus, I think Zeroplas, I can think of seven right off the top of my head. When I'm at ICMA this year, I'll probably see a bunch more.
Yep.
You know, that, that's, you know-
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, I think it'd be really cool too, but I just want, you know-
It actually makes the packet more accessible, it makes the packet, I'm sorry.
No, I just want more than the select board to be using it, you know?
I, I think, I think that's the first thing, I think, I think you're absolutely right. I think that if we, if we do this, select board could certainly be the proven concept, sort of a crash test dummy.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, you need to make this requiring all the committees, it's just where we're gonna do things. And um, in terms of, in terms of accessibility for the public, having a posted packet, as opposed to having a posted Xerox packet, this is a much better system.
Yeah.
It's gonna be item one, item two, item three, you know, it'll just be, by nature, it'll be, it'll be better. Um, and so that'd be an expectation I think you should have, whenever a system gets selected, that's gonna seem easier-friendly.
Like a really-
That being said, it's gonna be a change.
Yeah, I would really hope too, like, it's really hard for us now, and the public, to go back and say, what was the vote? What was the thing, without going back to minutes and figuring it out, like maybe the system-
Scroll, 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 scroll.
Which would be very-
As, as a member of a board in another town that uses Dropbox for agendas, um, I bought a Rema, I bought a case of paper for my office, so I could have paper copies, um, especially with plans, because when you're reviewing plans, you write notes on the plans.
Yeah.
And the same thing like with the agenda stuff, when I go through my agenda, I'm writing notes all on the papers, so that when we go and we have the discussion, I have like questions in my notes right there. So I don't know how that agenda would suffer.
So unless it's, unless it's a, unless you're talking about plans in size, if you're talking about like documents, you, some of these systems, they're editable documents on your, on your account.
Okay.
You just, you know, you're in Adobe and you can mark up the, mark it up.
I think it's something we just have to like not be afraid of trying.
Right, yeah, I mean, do we have any examples?
Maybe it's a benefit to your office as well.
Where?
Definitely.
You know, just to-
I've worked, I've worked on about three of them. Um, the one, the one that we worked, that I worked on the most is Novus Agenda, which I probably should be dropping names and, but it's a, um, which is a very, it's a widely-used system.
Yep.
The best system? I'm not sure if it is the best system, but it's, it's cheap, I'll tell you that.
And the town's website platform has one available as well, which might tie into the calendar, minutes in our agendas, and, I don't know, we don't know if we don't even look.
I think so, I'm going to ICMA next month, though, you know, Exhibit Hall will have a lot of them.
And also, um, see about using a tablet versus, um, a laptop? Because I know that, you know, as a, I'll say as a, as a young old dog, I always liked paper, because I do write my notes and, you know, and I like to sit and go through them, and, um, I found at one of the last meetings that I said, all right, I'm breaking out the laptop, I'm using it. It was very difficult for me, because I had to go through, you know, a couple of different things, but I did manage to write notes on Adobe, so that I had it on the paper, but it wasn't, you know, as easy with, um, you know, the laptop. If there was a stylus, it probably would have been easier. So I just, we want a smooth transition, low capital cost, um, and-
Whatever it gets recommended or approved needs to be, you know, the board needs to own it, and if you're comfortable with it and use it, so this is obviously gonna be-
Have to use it, right.
And this would potentially tie into the whole, you know, community access.
Right.
Yeah.
Subject area that we've talked about, making things more transparent.
Got it, good.
Um, did we hit all, everything in there? Most of the things, we'll be back, I'm sure. Okay, so, um, I mean, where do we leave it on the, you know, staffing and floaters? Are you gonna work something out?
Stick a pin in it.
Okay. I think we'll be back to talk on that one soon.
Talk to you about it next budget cycle.
Well, maybe, maybe another meeting, we have a discussion on utilization of existing floaters, so we don't get too off-topic here. All right, uh, anything else? We're moving on to number four?
All right, thank you.
All right, appreciate your time as always.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, Vice Chair Corboni, I believe you asked to have this one on, discuss the HR Director Transition Plan?
Yeah, I just, um, you know, I think everything was just in a whirlwind, um, you know, with, you know, John's, um, you know, announcement of resignation, and, you know, we haven't really talked about it, so if, you know, having that office vulnerable, what are we doing, um, you know, for services during that time? I'm, I'm-
So employee services during the time?
Yeah, until we have somebody, yeah, until we bring somebody on board.
Okay.
So, um, as I mentioned to the board earlier, um, I've talked to Mr. Hassett, he's willing to help out and oversee the payroll and day-to-day functions, and just, which he has some experience with. Um, he's not gonna be the HR Director or anything, but he'll be helping keep the train running. Um, we also have Mr. Holt, who's, who's on staff and doing his jobs, I think between the two, we're, we're good on the day-to-day stuff. Um, we also have the class and comp study underway, the timing is about awkward. Um, right now, that study's basically running itself, because the consultant is doing their thing, J and Qs are going out, people filling them out, they're coming in. Yes, I think, I think if we don't have a, uh, an HR Director by the time we get into real policy, developing regulations for the budget and things like that, then, then that, then that could be, that could be a challenge, but that's a little bit off. Um, we have, um, give you a quick update on where we are in the recruitment, we have forty-eight applications.
Forty-eight?
Forty-eight, um, there were probably about six to eight, maybe, probably six that are, um, you know, that I think are probably worth interviewing, have some appropriate experience, you know, and so on. I think as, as I mentioned to you in the, in the past, I'm looking for someone who's, who understands policy, but also really understands the technical aspects and can, you know, keep things, try to really keep that, that, the, the, the day-to-day running effectively. And, um, you know, we have about five by six or so that really seem to fit that bill, it's on paper. So, um, my intention was to pursue and approach so much what we did last time when we recruited, which was, um, yeah, we have, we have panel interviews with a number of department heads, we're looking at sometime in, part of mid-September, um, set up the interviews. And, um, the, uh, the department heads, um, uh, let's see, I have my list here. Uh, it was good, it was, Matt Perkins, Chief Perkins, Chief O'Brien, uh, Town Clerk, um, Town Accountant. Um, feel like I'm missing somebody, myself, obviously.
Any value in the former HR Director being in that panel?
So it's possible, if he's willing, he'll just start at his new job, oh, you mean, you mean Clarinda? That's a possible last. She's in the, she's, she'd be a good choice, she's in the last one, so if you ask her to. Um, but anyway, uh, just a good cross, you know, sort of cross, oh, Frank Moniz, that was the other one. Across, um, you know, sort of cross-discipline, good profile of the organization. Um, they'll interview, come with some recommendations, um, I'll meet with, I'll meet with the individual individuals, and I'll make recommendations to the board. Um, hopefully we have that process worked through, if we have good candidates and good applicants to work on this pool, you know, there's no reason why we shouldn't be able to make a decision by the end of the month.
You know, I got to thinking about this position, um, and I don't know why, or if there was an opportunity to bring it up before about to, to kind of real- Usually when you have, um, an open position, you like to be able to, you know, take a step back and say, okay, let's look at our, um, you know, our infrastructure. Is there anything that we need or any, you know, you know, direction that we're looking to take down the road? But, you know, ideally, and I know this happens in a lot of municipalities, uh, that the HR Director is also an assistant town administrator, where they've done that, you know, that role for basically the same, you know, kind of money, where they would actually, you know, be able to provide that extra, and it's also a growth, growth path, you know, for somebody. Um, so I just, I mean, I know that I'm just dropping this out here, but it's, I think it's something that we, you know, certainly, you know, can consider at some point, but, um, you know, for the same, same money. But.
Yeah, if we didn't have this kind of thrown at us at the last minute without much heads up.
I know, we're, we're kind of responding, we're in response mode to, you know, filling the position, but, um, I mean, is this, would the board be in, can, did we review? I can't remember, did we review the HR position?
Um, I sent you the, uh, note information August first, asked if anyone had any thoughts or comments on it.
Because we had just done that, yeah.
Right, so I, I assumed that we were okay, because it was, it wasn't that old of any-
Right.
And what Josh was, I thought it was in the town's interest to get the position out there.
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't really think that, unless it was a major change like that, I don't really think the position itself. They didn't need too much fine-tuning, but that would be like a total, you know, restructure.
Right, yeah, I mean, I'm just, you know, trying to, you know, realign resources too, because it would be an, an extra person, you know, in our-
Yep.
Yeah, and I can't speak to how busy the HR Director's Day is, day in and day out either, or what other roles they have time for.
All right, mic drop.
So mid-September, panel interviews, and then bringing one or a couple finals?
We'll see.
Okay, depends on what you got.
One shining, one shining star, one shining star.
There will be. I'm hopeful.
I hope so, I hope you're right.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I'm also not gonna bring anybody if there's nobody worth bringing, so, you know.
Right.
So, I really don't wanna have happen, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring someone just to fill the body.
All right, uh, any other discussion on that?
No, I'm, thank you for, uh, adding that, I just-
No, you're welcome.
I appreciate the timeline there.
All right, uh, if there's no other discussion, I'm taking a motion to close at six twenty-three P.M.
So moved to second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you very much, appreciate it.